So, good morning, everybody. So nice to see everybody here through the miracle of technology. I call the meeting of April fourteenth, twenty twenty, to order. And if I may, members A, are you live? Are you on the phone there? I'd like to ask you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the states of America, to the republic for which it stands, indivisible, perfect, and justice for all.
Perfect.
Thank you.
That we did not rehearse. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Moving right along, I'd like to begin our meeting at this point, in any event, and ask for a moment's silence in honor of those who've died as a result of COVID-19 and those who are ill. Okay, I do have a little thought here to share with you on the Order of Invocation. I will proceed as follows. Dear Lord, we ask you to bring us together when we must be apart. We ask for calm in the midst of a storm. We ask you to make us steady when we must forge a new path. Together, let us be a blessing. Let us bring your light and your wisdom to the discussions today. Let us be strengthened by you and each other as we strive to serve all who depend on us in this time of great need. Amen. So, we have Mr. Johnson as our clerk, is that correct? So, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplain.
Here. Here.
Desart.
Here.
D'Ciani.
Here.
He just seems to touch his up by camera.
Eckhoff.
Yeah.
Elliott.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Kudjuski.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Noonan.
Here.
Ozog.
Here.
Pachowski.
Here.
Here.
Renahan.
Here.
Rutledge.
Sheen, I think you're on mute.
Here, sorry.
Selman.
Here.
Tornatori.
Here.
Zay.
Okay, so just from the record pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order, members are participating remotely by electronic means. Thank you, Mr. Clerk, for taking the role, and we have a quorum. On the Order of Chairman's Report, just a couple of thoughts, please. I wanted to, first of all, point out that our technology team has done a marvelous job. I know they worked very hard, so we're conducting this meeting remotely to accommodate public health need for social distancing, physical distancing, and work-at-home requirements as part of DuPage County's COVID-19 response and to comply with directions, including the Governor's Executive Order. I want to thank our IT department, Don Carlson, Wendy Wagner. Wendy's here, Michelle is here, and I want to say thank you very much for a job well done. This is a Zoom platform, and so it should work well for our purposes. Since last met, our Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management has collected more than one hundred and sixty-five thousand pieces of personal protective equipment and to first responders and healthcare workers across DuPage County. We thank our business partners, schools, and private citizens who've donated many important items that protect those on the front lines of the COVID-19 battle. Many, many folks are pitching in any way they can. High school students, including those from Downers Grove and Timothy Christian School in Elmhurst are making face shields in their innovation and design labs for physicians and healthcare workers. Timothy Christian School also inverted part of its space to become an emergency daycare center for the nurses, doctors, and essential employees of Elmhurst Hospital. Our community has enthusiastically embraced the Amazon wishlist items needed to enrich the lives and brighten the days of our DuPage Care Center residents. Community services and transportation workers have been pitching in to assist homeless residents and to deliver meals to seniors, and Choose DuPage delivered spring floral arrangements to DuPage Care Center employees to show how much we appreciate them. I'm so proud of the way our community has come together, support these efforts, big or small. Every action, I believe, is significant and has an impact at this point in time, so thank you. That's the heartening news in the midst of this unprecedented public health fight. But too many families in our county are facing uncertainty. Of course, they're suffering anxiety and heartbreaking loss as a result of COVID-19. I also ask the community to come together to honor and support families who are grieving. There is something we can do to minimize the damage done by this virus. I repeat my plea for folks to adhere to the public health guidelines. The experts tell us we're in the height of the COVID activity this month. This may be the peak. Lots of folks have identified April twelfth. So, you know, it appears we may be approaching the downside of that curve, which is the good news, but it also means that we need to be more vigilant now than ever. So, please, continue to observe social distancing, stay at home, and we will get through this. On today's agenda, you'll find two resolutions in support of DuPage Pads and Catholic Charities, which are providing emergency housing for the unsheltered homeless population in DuPage. I thank Mary Keating, Community Services Director, for coordinating with the charities. I ask for your support for this resolution, providing safety net services for the neediest in our county. Also, had some good collaborative efforts with some of our legislators, both sides of the aisle. Representative Conroy, I wanted to give her a shout out for her involvement and leadership, and so wanted to make sure I made that for the record. So, that concludes my report, the Chairman's Report. We move on to the Order of Business entitled "Public Comment." According to our County Board rules, members of the public have an opportunity to address the board, but due to the social distancing and the physical distancing restrictions, we offered the public the opportunity to address the board through electronic means. So, the State's Attorney will read those comments and those remarks. Again, the State's Attorney knows that they shall not exceed three minutes in length. And so, Mr. State's Attorney, Connor McCarthy, please begin with public comment.
The first comment is from Charles Gerut, G-E-R-U-T. It's on the topic of the primary election. Mr. Gerut's comments state, "The County Board and Insurrection in its first election was poorly done. The precautions for safety were well executed by election judges, but the listing of our names in our associated school districts were mismatched. As a result, a large number of school district forty-five were listed living in school district forty-four. A simple transfer of data from the now dissolved Election Commission would seem to be a routine matter. County Board officers failed. Numerous delays at the election site occurred at a time of heightened safety risk to the voters." That was the end of Mr. Gerut's comment. My next comment is from M. A. N. I. A. C. O. T. R. O. M. A. N. E. S. It's on the topic of property taxes. The comment states, "This is such a difficult time for us all, seeing how so many institutions, including the federal government, have made concessions to help citizens meet their financial obligations. Can we not structure payment of our property taxes so as to ease our burden? Would it be feasible to make payments quarterly, such as June one, September one, December one, and March one? Whatever assistance you could offer, I'm sure would provide relief to so many taxpayers. Thank you for considering this proposal." That concludes your comment. Next comment is on house taxes. It's from Teresa Tremine, T-E-R-M-I-N-E. Hi, I think with federal taxes being pushed back, no foreclosures or evictions in place, no penalty fees, et cetera, to help us with the struggles of life, paying bills, loss of jobs, or being laid off, that at this meeting should be a plan in place for homeowners owing taxes, June one to September one. Please consider the same compassion with us in DuPage County. Thank you for your time and consideration. All the best, Teresa Tremine. Next comment's from Bonnie Grabenhoffer, G-R-A-B-E-N-H-O-F-E-R, from the DuPage National Organization for Women. It's discussing waiving of late fees for real estate property tax payments. Her comments state, "I urge the DuPage County Board members to support Treasurer Henry's proposal to waive late fees for real estate tax payments for up to ninety days. In addition to dealing with the health crisis, many DuPage citizens, especially low-wage workers who are disproportionately women, are experiencing a financial crisis. Many have lost their jobs and are having difficulty paying their bills. Surely, a wealthy county like DuPage can show compassion and waive late fees for the real estate tax payment." Thank you to Treasurer Gwen Henry for the proposal, and thank you for the board members considering it. The next comment is by Wayne Enerson, E-N-E-R-S-O-N, and it's on the subject of waste of tax money. The comment says, "Why does the board get over fifty thousand dollars in pay plus benefits for a part-time job?" Followed by several question marks. That concludes Mr. Enerson's comment. The next comment is from Jacob Cinnamon Murphy, C-Y-N-A-M-O-N hyphen Murphy, the usual way. It's regarding pursuing DuPage County-wide allowance of backyard poultry. The comment states, "In the midst of our current crisis and our statewide shelter-in-place order, it has become abundantly clear that there are major weaknesses in our food supply chain and our ability to effectively support the needs of our residents in DuPage County. Many municipalities in and around DuPage County have enacted ordinances that balance the needs of residents seeking to take personal responsibility for improving food security with those who have concerns about the impact of backyard henkeeping in their neighborhoods. We have a responsibility to enact countywide ordinances that give residents the ability to provide for our future by keeping backyard hens." That concludes his comment. Next comment's from Billy Joe Mills regarding henkeeping. His comment states, "Greetings, I am ready to express my support to allow henkeeping in DuPage County. All human beings alive today are descendants of farmers and people who succeeded in growing, raising, and hunting food. It is essential and innate human right to grow and raise your own food. Eggs from laying hens are a rich source of proteins and nutrients. The food supply chain depends on many people and companies. However, we all have the right to survive on food that does not depend on others. As we see today, the American food supply is disrupted by COVID-19. I don't want my fourteen-month-old daughter to have to rely on eggs shipped from two thousand miles away. I want my daughter to be able to step out of our back door and understand where our eggs come from. As a provider, I want to know that my family does not have to depend on a food supply chain that could break from disease strikes or unforeseen events. All humans need food. Growing your own food is a fundamental right. It's not a luxury or fanciful hobby. It's essential to the human experience. Please protect the right of DuPage residents to raise their own egg-laying hens. Peace and love you all, Billy Joe Mills." The next comments are from Sandra Pufall, P-U-F-A-A-H-L. It regards allowing DuPage County-wide backyard chickens. Some DuPage County municipalities allow backyard chicken keeping with some restrictions. Most do not, and unincorporated DuPage does not. Raising backyard poultry is a way of providing food and encouraging sustainable living. This has become a more pressing need as we are finding the availability of eggs and meat to be limited, and if available, at a reasonable price in this COVID-19 crisis. Laying hens are not noisy. Ten hens generate less waste than a forty-pound dog. Chicken coops are quite charming. Chickens eat almost all of the kitchen waste, ticks, bugs, and mice." That's the end of her comment. She submitted the same comment again, so I'll note that we received two comments from Sandra Pufall, which are identical. Someone named Josie B., J-O-S-E-E-B., is concerned about DuPage County Nursing Home not following CDC guidance. Josie's comment states, "The administrator and corporate owners of a skilled nursing facility in your county are setting DuPage are setting coronavirus policies that go against the CDC guidelines, putting residents and staff at great risk. Coronavirus is present at the facility. My eighty-five-year-old mother resides at this facility, and she and her staff members have provided me information, which can be proven slash backed up by the onsite video cameras. I have been trying to sound the alarm for well over a week about the situation. I asked that a high-level person contact me to discuss." That concludes Josie B.'s public comment. With regards to ad hoc collective bargaining, I have a comment from Edgar Powell. He'd like to thank the Ad Hoc Collective Bargaining Committee for allowing members of the public to call in to join the teleconference. The COVID-19 pandemic has forced us all to think of ways we can work remotely, and he applauds the county's efforts to ensure that all public meetings remain open and transparent to the public. There's the duplicate comment from Mr. Powell on that. And the final comment is from Greg Werfel, W-E-R-F-E-L. He filled out the entire comment form but didn't fill out his comment. So, just we received a request to comment, and the comment section was blank. So, for the record, Mr. Werfel attempted to fill out a public comment, and we read it into the record. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. That concludes our public comment portion of our meeting. We move on to the Order of Business entitled "Consent." Is there a motion?
Don't move. Don't move.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
D'Ciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart. Healy.
Aye.
Kudjuski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Okay, consent items are adopted. Onto the Order of Finance, Mr. Bob Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move to combine agenda items A through C.
And a motion to move items A through C. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, the ayes have the ayes are combined. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would then move approval of FIR three fifteen twenty, acceptance and appropriation of additional funding for the ILD CEO Community Services Grant, three twenty four twenty, additional funding for the Illinois Department of Human Services Supportive Housing Grant, and three sixteen twenty, acceptance and appropriation of funding for the Aging Case Coordination Unit Fund, PY twenty.
Second.
A motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
D'Ciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kudjuski.
Aye.
Okay, those resolutions are adopted. Mr. Larson.
Mr. Chairman, I approve FIR three seventeen twenty, allocation of fifty thousand dollars in county funding to DuPage Pads. For...
Second most favorable roll.
Leave.
Leave is granted. Member Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I approve FIR three twenty twenty, which is an allocation of thirty-five thousand dollars to Catholic charities for the same purpose.
Second most favorable.
Leave.
Leave is granted, Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Remove approval of FIR three twenty-two twenty, placing names on payroll. We did amend that to remove one position per stand's recommendation, and so I would present that as amended.
Second most favorable roll.
Leave.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move approval of FIR two ninety-eight twenty, revision of personnel budget for the county sheriff.
Did you pass over budget transfers?
Yes.
Move approval of FIR three twenty-one twenty, budget transfers for various companies.
Second most favorable roll.
Leave.
Leave is granted.
Number Larson. Remove of FIR two ninety-eight twenty, revision of the personnel budget for the sheriff.
Second most favorable roll.
Leave.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Approval of FIO thirty-three twenty, determining the compensation of members of the DuPage County Board.
Roll call, please. Second.
Okay. And a motion and a second. There's a request for a roll call. Is there anyone seeking recognition for purposes of discussion here? I know you had a good discussion in finance. Member Tornatori, are you seeking recognition?
No, I am not.
Anyone else seeking recognition? Apparently not, so, Mr. Clerk, we have a motion and a second, a request for a roll call. Please call the roll.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
D'Ciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
No.
Hart.
No.
Healy.
Aye.
Kudjuski.
Aye.
Sixteen voting aye, two voting nay. The resolution is adopted. Member Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Remove approval of FIO thirty-four twenty, determining the compensation of various DuPage County elected officials.
Second.
And a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk. Is there anyone seeking recognition? Seeing none, hearing none. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Aye. Renahan.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Desart.
Aye.
D'Ciani.
Eckhoff.
Eckhoff, aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Elliott. Hart. Healy.
Hart, aye.
Healy, aye.
Kudjuski.
Aye.
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, there seems to be an echo when the clerk is calling the names, that they're being double heard, which is why there's some confusion in the voting.
Right.
Everybody voted unanimously, but maybe we take it a little slower.
I'll try taking the mask off.
The microphone's in the room.
The problem is, is that we have a number of, remember, Pachowski, our attorney, and Mr. Johnson, and so we're picking up the audio of the voice in the room in addition, so it's a little... Pardon me? Yeah, if you can mute them. Yeah, we'll try to mute everybody who's not speaking. Okay, when they need to speak, we unmute. So, yeah, so, okay, the resolution is adopted. Member Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Remove FIP one eleven twenty, recommendation for the approval of contact to Alexian Brothers Ambulatory Group for Health-Related Services Contract, not to exceed twenty-six thousand five ninety-six.
And a motion and a second. There's a request for leave. Leave is granted. Member Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finally, I move approval of nineteen dash twenty dash three seventy-eight, approval of an amendment to the resolution for purchase order for a contract to Lainer Meecham Limited for professional legal services.
Second most favorable. Leave.
Leave.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great. That concludes our business under the Order of Finance. We move on to the Order of Development. Member Sam Tornatori.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone. I move approval of DCO twenty-nine dash twenty ordinance, Z nineteen seventy-nine. Caller, this is zoning hearing officer's recommendation to approve a conditional use to allow an existing shed.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
D'Ciani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kudjuski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Member Tornatori, forgive me.
Mr. Chairman, subject to the State's Attorney's approval, I apologize if I was supposed to move to discharge committee prior to making these motions. Connor, should I have done that?
The chairman and the, oh, sorry, the County Board has original authority over all of these based upon amendment to the County Board rules and their suspension, so there's no need to discharge any committee. You have original jurisdiction here at the County Board.
Thank you, Connor. With that, I would move on to DCO thirty dash twenty ordinance, Z twenty dash zero zero one, also zoning hearing officer's recommendation to approve a variation to allow required parking spaces.
Second most favorable roll.
Leave.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of DCO thirty-one dash twenty ordinance, Z twenty oh three. This is an approval of a variation to approve or reduce a corner yards side setback.
Second most favorable roll.
Leave.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finally, I move approval of DCO thirty-two dash twenty ordinance, Z twenty eleven. This is a zoning hearing officer's recommendation to approve a variation to allow a detached accessory building.
Second most favorable roll.
Leave.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.[1642.94]
Thank you, Mr. Tornatori. A fine report. On to the order of Health and Human Services, member Pete Diciani.
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to give a shout out to our care center, uh, who, uh, has zero cases currently of COVID. Um, Janelle Chadwick is running that place like a, a Timex watch right now. Um.
Timex or Rolex?
I would say Timex because it's extremely reliable. Uh, but she, she's, uh, testing temperatures of all the employees three times a day, uh, making sure that none of our employees are bringing anything in, uh, no visitation by family members. Um, you know, which is tough on family members, but we're trying to do the best thing we can for our, our, our three hundred plus patients that are over there. So I also want to give a shout out to the, uh, frontline, uh, nurses and, uh, emergency EMS people, paramedics, um, doctors, ER docs, uh, at all our hospitals throughout the county who are fighting this fight head on. And, um, I mean, uh, very unselfishly putting themselves and their families in harm's way. So, uh, with that, I, I thank them. Uh, we consent to the body. I, I like to, uh, combine and approve, uh, move the combined items A one through four on the Health and Human Services, uh, agenda.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to, uh, combine items A one through four. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on, uh, Kronos, uh, item number, um, uh, four, four oh six oh dash zero zero one. Replacement of workforce, uh, tall-time IP-based, uh, for our care center. I move on item twenty twenty dash seventeen recommendation for approval of contract with Performance Health, uh, for bariatric, uh, motorized height and width adjustments, installation for our, our care center in the amount of ten thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-one cents. I move on item twenty twenty dash seventy-seven with Copan Eirdo Attorney at Law, uh, for legal services in the amount of twenty thousand, again, for our care center regarding labor. And, uh, lastly, on this particular combined, uh, move on item twenty twenty to seventy-eight recommendation for approval of contract purchase order with, uh, Smith Technologies, uh, in the amount of twenty-two thousand, uh, for, again, for our care center.
Hey, there's been a motion and a second on these combined items. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalski. Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Selman. Tornatori. Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Uh, I'd also like to, uh, make a motion to combine, uh, items B, C, D, all our items, uh, recommendations of approval of various contracts.
And a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The items are combined. Please proceed, Mr. Diciani.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on HHSR zero two eight five dash twenty, uh, recommendation approval of home investment partnerships in the amount of two million five hundred and fifty thousand, uh, for the, um, uh, Warrenville Horizon Limited Partnership, uh, senior community living. I move on HHSR thirty eighteen dash twenty, a resolution with the county of DuPage and WSKC Dialysis Services for our care center. I move on item HHSP eleven twelve dash twenty, uh, contract with Insight Public Sector for the purchase of twenty-one Lenovo ThinkPads, uh, with, this is all CSBG funded, in the amount of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and eighteen thousand. Uh, it's for our community services program. And lastly, a change order, HHSP zero four, zero zero four nine A dash nineteen in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars with Medline Industries net to exceed two hundred and eight thousand dollars.
Okay, and a motion and a second. Uh.
Leave.
There's a request for leave. Leave is granted. Thank you, Mr. Diciani. On to the order of judicial public safety, member Grant Eckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I would just note that, uh, agenda items eleven A, one through four are consent agenda items that were placed under consent because normally they would not move forward to county board. So if any, uh, county board member would like to pull one of these and have a discussion on it, please be known. Otherwise, I would move approval of, uh, JPS Agenda eleven A, one through four. If I can go through those, twenty twenty.
Okay, leave of the body. The items are combined. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move approval of twenty twenty dash seventy-three recommendation for contract to Medline Industries for vinyl examination gloves for the sheriff's office. Twenty twenty seventy-five recommendation for approval of contracted door system for the installation of a pedestrian door operator. Eleven A, grant proposal for the substance abuse and mental health services. And finally, eleven A four informational items from the public defender's office regarding his appointments with his courts.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second on these items. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott. Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Okay, resolution is adopted. On to the, uh, next item, uh, Mr. Eckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of JPS one oh nine twenty. Prove of appointment of Jillian Rogerio as a conflicts attorney for juvenile court cases.
Second.
Most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move approval of JPS one one zero dash twenty recommendation for approval of contract purchase order to Midwest Office Interiors Furnishment all, seating and tables for the adult and juvenile waiting areas of the probation and court services areas.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think member Desart wants to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me. I didn't see that. Please, member Desart, she's seeking recognition. Her mic is on mute. Wendy. Desart.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to, uh, let folks know why I'm voting against this. This is thirty-one, almost thirty-two thousand dollars in, um, furniture, chairs, and seating tables for the probation and court, probation and court services. And I just think we need to, um, hold back on spending money on things like this right now. Thank you. The roll call is what I'm asking for.
And if I, if I could just respond to that, Mr. Chairman, these, we identified during finance that these items are coming out of the, uh, specifically designated fund from the probation department. They cannot be put into the general fund. So we're not using money in the for something else.
Who called? Um, okay, great. Uh, so there's been a request for a roll call. That's always in order. There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Uh-oh, standby. Technical difficulties. We have our SWAT team here.
The clerk looks frozen. He's on mute right now. He's not moving either. Ready to go.
Hello?
All right, back in action.
All right. What motion were we on?
Last agenda item of JPS. Roll call.
Who made the motion?
Eckoff.
Eckoff. All right. Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Krajewski. Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Aye. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Nay.
Diciani.
Aye.
Number Krajewski came back.
Aye.
You can probably record it.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Would be so noted. Okay, uh, seventeen voting aye, one voting nay. The resolution is adopted. Uh, Mr. Larson? Do you have anything further? No, that concludes your report. We move on to the order, uh, entitled Public Works, member Jim Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those of us with facial hair now appreciate you growing your beard. That will let me see my goatee. Okay. All right. I'd move to approve, uh, items, uh, A one through four. Move to combine.
Second.
And a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The items are combined. Please proceed.
I move to approve, uh, consent item one, which is a decrease by eighty-two thousand dollars in a contract to Data Landscaping Contractors LLC. Item number two, which is payment of claims for public works and facilities management. Item number three, which is a contract to Russo Power Equipment for a Toro stand-up lawnmower. And item number four, which is a contract to Russo Power Equipment for two sectional, sectional pusher, snowplow equipment and parts.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Healy.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalski.
Aye.
Renahan. Rutledge.
Looked like an eye to me.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Okay. No, does, does member Rutledge know that she's on mute? I.
I'm, I'm a lip reader and counted as an aye.
Okay.
But you are on mute, member Rutledge. I don't know.
I think she's trying to fight off her puppy there. I think she's muting for our benefit.
Thank you.
By Sheila, we're all rooting for the puppy. Item number B has been pulled. Item number B has been pulled for two weeks.
Number B?
I move for approval of item number C, FMP one oh six twenty, which is a contract to Interboro Packaging to deliver trash can plastic trash and recycling liners.
Second most favorable role.
Leave is granted, Mr. Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of item number D, which is FMP one oh seven twenty contract Ashland Door to provide maintenance for the doors as needed.
Second most favorable role.
Leave is granted, Mr. Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of item number E, which is FMP one oh eight twenty, which is contract Ashel Lock and Security Solutions to provide lax meth services as needed.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of FMP one one three twenty contract HW LLC for the purchase of one John Deere, uh, terrain cut with comfort cap.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finally, I move for approval of FMP one one four twenty contract to American Combustion Services, Inc. to provide and install replacement chiller system for the DuPage County Historical Museum.
Second most favorable role.
Question, questions, questions, please.
Yes, please. Member Chaplin for a question.
Thank you so much. So, um, just a couple of questions on this. Is this under the Wheaton Park District, the historical museum?
Actually, the building is owned by the county. They are doing, they are the ones who we have a, we have an agreement with for them to do the work during the year in that place. We've kind of cooperated with them on operation of the building and the contents.
Okay, so, um, this money then is coming out of the county, this hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars?
Correct.
Okay, so my question is, um, this is a big item. I don't know if it's urgent. I'm wondering if we can maybe pull this and any documents that might be fragile or, um, uh, delicate, maybe we could, uh, do like the county clerk did and send those documents to the state archive and put this off maybe for a while, um, and then do this at another time because, again, I'm, I'm under this emergency declaration. I mean, I think people should have a, a chance to really weigh in on this. It's a big expenditure, um, and I, you know, I, I just, I'm not sure about it right at this point in time.
It is not just the documents, but also the contents of, you know, furniture and things of that nature, but also the employees. So if Nick Kotmeyer is on the line anywhere, uh.
He's not.
For a couple of weeks, but I think this is something we need to approve. I actually asked that exact same question. It is something we need to have done because it has pretty much failed. And it's not just for documents, but for the furniture, as, you know, and, and other things that are in the archives as well as the employees. So.
We want to preserve the employees. I don't get that.
Well, it's to help the employees have a comfortable environment in which to work.
Yeah, do, do you think they'll even be open? I mean, this summer?
That's why I was hoping Nick was on the line because I was going to actually ask him that exact same question.
Okay, all right. Thanks. Okay.
Further discussion, member Ozog.
Would it be possible to pull this item for two weeks?
If there's a motion to, uh, to remove this from the agenda, um, and you've seconded it from member Chaplin, we can entertain that motion.
I see Nick is on the line. Nick, can I pull this for two weeks?
Okay, so a little bit of background on this. This is actually dollars provided by, by the Historical Museum. This is the grant dollars that they originally received for the, uh, the roof replacement. So this is money that they have provided as, as part of it. The replacement out there, it is a critical replacement, can wait two weeks. It can wait two weeks, but it can't wait, uh, a year. I mean, it's, it's a failing system that needs to be replaced, but this is money that they have, they have, uh, provided.
Okay.
Can't be spent for anything other than DuPage Historical Museum purposes?
It, it is for, it, it, well, I mean, it's, I guess, yes, it has to be for Historical Museum because that was the grant or the reimbursement for the, uh, original roof replacement several years ago.
And what's the original, the source of the grant? Was the county the source of that grant?
No, it was, uh, state of Illinois.
Oh, okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, so, uh, member Ozog, do you want to proceed with your, uh, motion to withdraw this or would you want to just go to a roll call?
I think we can go to a roll call.
Okay, good. Thanks. Um, so, uh, is there a motion and a second on this item?
We do a second most favorable role.
Uh. Okay, there's been a motion, uh, and a second for most favorable role. It's a request for leave.
Leave.
No objection. Leave is granted. Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Healy. On to the order of stormwater, member Jim Zay.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I move to, uh, combine approve, uh, item A consent agenda, one through four. These are all decreasing closeout contracts.
And a motion and a second to combine these items. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Please proceed, Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on, uh, consent one, close out the Markham. Consent two, close out the Northwest General Contractors. Consent three, close out to Rudiger and Tenelli, and consent four to AECom Technical Services.
Second.
A motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Okay, the items are adopted. Uh, Mr., Mr. Rose, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on item five, recommendation approval and acceptance of the lower self-recre- watershed quality plan.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted, Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on item six, action requested. Motion two, not to object to variance petition for request for relief from DuPage County Stormwater Ordinance, uh, development without one thou- one hundred percent, uh, required site runoff. This is for the West Chicago Park District.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted, Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on twenty twenty sixty-eight approval of contract issued to water products in the amount of thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted, Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on twenty twenty sixty-nine recommendation approval of contract issued to Great Lakes Concrete in the amount of six thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Thank you.
Leave is granted. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on item nine, uh, recommendation approval of twenty twenty dash seventy to Karsoff Technology Corporation in the amount of twenty-four thousand eight hundred and three dollars and seventy-one cents for software upgrade.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted, Mr. Zay. Leave is granted, Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, move on 202071, recommendation of contract issued to Vulcan Construction for materials in the amount of $15,000 per those responsible bid.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted, Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, move on item B, SMR 31120, grant of temporary construction easement to Wheaton Sanitary District.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, move on SMR 31220, recommendation approval agreement between DuPage County and Grodmill Homeowners Association for Floodgate.
Leave.
Leave is granted, Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, move on SMR 31320, integral agreement between DuPage County and Wheaton Sanitary District for Spring Brook Creek Bank Stabilization Project.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted, Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, move on SMP 9620, agreement between DuPage County and V3 Companies Provide Professional Native Management uh, for stormwater management amount of $65,000.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted, Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move on SMP 97.
Oh, yes, Member Desart.
Uh, Chairman, um, I do not believe that items E, F, and G are necessary right now, necessary expenditures. They're all dealing with stormwater and they're all dealing with vegetation management services. And, um, we were told in finance that they need to be done now, but I disagree that these items need to be done now. So I would like to make sure that I am a no vote on item P, F, and G. Because I, again, I don't believe that we need to spend money right now in these unprecedented times on vegetation management, thank you.
I understand, so let's go back, uh, on E with leave of the body, we'll go back and entertain a motion and a second and a roll call. So there was a motion and there was a second, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll on item E?
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Nay.
D'Ziani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatory.
Aye.
Thank you, uh, the item is adopted, please proceed, uh, Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, move on SMP 9720, approval of agreement between DuPage County and Cardinal, Inc. for professional native landscape management amount of $65,000.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted, Mr. Zay.
Chairman, I move on SMP 9820, group agreement between DuPage County and Hampton, Leansy, and Wenbrook for professional native vegetation in the amount of $65,000.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted, okay, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Zay, a fine report. On to the order of technology, Member Greg Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, under Chairman's or committee update, I wanted to still pay your Chairman's remarks and thank our incredible IT staff for all their help and work in setting up the Zoom meeting and and really changing our business processes, uh, from the county at much short notice, I know it's not as easy feat. So Don, Wendy, Michelle, and Joe, I wanted to thank you for all your your efforts. Uh, and with that, I'll move approval of item A, one, under consent, under technology 21-81, recommendation for the approval of.
And a motion, is there a second? Motion and a second, uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatory.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
D'Ziani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Hart.
And then I move on item B, TEP 115-20, recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase ordered inside public sector.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move on item C, TEP 116-20, recommendation for the approval of a contract to physicians record company.
Second most favorable role. Leave.
Leave is granted, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move on item D, TEP 71A-20, Amendment to Resolution, TEP 71-20 issued to CDW Government.
Leave.
Yes, Member Ozog?
Yeah, I was going to.
Roll call, please.
Yeah, roll call.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second on this item, uh, item D, TECO 8-20, been a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Oh.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
No.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatory.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
No.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Nay.
D'Ziani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Fourteen voting aye, four voting nay, the resolution is adopted, Mr. Member Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, lastly, I move on TEP 278A-19, Amendment to Resolution, TEP 278-19 issued to CDW Government to enter into an enterprise term license agreement with the Dovi Systems.
Second most favorable role.
Oh, can I just? No, no, roll call, please. Can I have a question, please?
Certainly, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman, so in technology, um, was this, I think I I thought I heard this was, um, this increase was because of the COVID-19, is that correct?
It's not exclusively related to COVID, but it certainly helps in that time to help sign documents, this is something that I believe HR, uh, has been planning to push through, but is more important now because of COVID.
Right, okay, so are we going to, um, label this then as a COVID expense, do you think? Or, um, or would it not fall under one of our COVID?
I say yes.
Absolutely.
Very aggressive.
Absolutely, we would, we would label it as COVID-19.
Okay, great, now that will reflect my vote, thank you so much.
Any further questions? Okay, uh, there's a motion.
I think Member Desart is looking.
Member Desart, he moved on me.
Roll call vote on this, please.
Yes, there will be a roll call vote, is there anyone else seeking, uh, recognition for purposes of a question? Seeing none, hearing none, there's a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Oh.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatory.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
D'Ziani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Eight seventeen voting aye, one voting nay, the resolution is adopted, Mr. Hart. I think that concludes your report, a fine report. And thank you for your involvement in setting up this technology too, Member Hart. Onto the order of transportation, Member Don Pachowski, who is right here with us in our very presence.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, uh, we have a consent agenda, a paragraph A, I'd like to combine in, uh, A1 through A7.
Second.
And a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye, opposed nay, the ayes have it, items are combined, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, move to approve A1, which is 202080, a contract to Vermile, Illinois for repair and replacement parts not to exceed $10,000. A2, which is 202082, a contract to Interstate Power Systems for transmission repair and replacement parts not to exceed $20,000. A3, which is 202083, a contract to Linco Equipment Sales for a, uh, jumpstart unit not to exceed $9,376.86. A4, which is 202084, contract to Max Body Shop, Inc. for auto body repair service not to exceed $20,000. A5 is 202079, a contract to St. Francis Pet Cemetery for cemetery services as needed not to exceed $20,000. A6 is 202085, a contract to S&amp;M E&amp;G Services, Inc. Doing Business as All Paws Pet Creation for crematory services not to exceed $5,000. And A7, which is a consent item for DuBernard McDonald for a revised Exhibit C.
Second. Aye. Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatory.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
D'Ziani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Okay, the resolution is adopted, thank you, Mr. Pachowski.
Move to approve DTR 29920, an integral agreement between the county and the city of Wheaton for parking facility improvements.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted, Mr. Pachowski.
Move to approve DTR 31020, integral agreement in the county of DuPage and Illinois Department of Transportation.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted, Mr. Pachowski.
Move to approve DTR 31420, awarding resolution to Alliance Contractors, Inc. for the 2020 various bridge repair program.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave.
Leave is granted.
Move to approve DTP 9920, a contract to party construction for paving materials.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted, Mr. Pachowski.
Move to approve DTP 120, a contract to K-Fam Limited Doing Businesses K5 Hodgkins for paving materials.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted.
Move to approve DTP 10120, contract to Ozinga Ready Mix for concrete cement.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
And Mr. Pachowski.
Move to approve DTP 10220, contract of open materials for coarse and fine aggregates.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Move to, leave is granted.
Move to approve DTP 10320, a contract to Mendel Metals, Inc. for aluminum sign tanks.
Second most favorable role.
Leave is granted.
Move to approve DTP 10420, contract to Westside Tractor Sales for John Deere replacement parts.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted.
Move to approve DT CO 620, amendment to the county contract to Westside Tractor Sales for repair and replacement parts.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted.
Move to approve DT CO 720, a contract to Patson, Inc. to deliver fright liner repair and replacement parts.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, amendment to DTR 364A-18, no amendment to a resolution issued to A Lamp Concrete Contractors for drainage improvements.
Second most favorable role.
Leave.
Leave is granted. On to the order of business entitled Old Business, Old Business, anyone seeking recognition on the order of old business, I see Mr. Eckoff's hand in the, uh, camera, Mr. Eckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, during finance, we had a discussion regarding a resolution being brought forward by the treasurer and there were a number of studies referred to and, uh, statistics that were thrown out, and I would request that, uh, we be forwarded a copy of those, one of which I think referred to uh, fifty percent of the households in DuPage County being one paycheck away from poverty, I would like to see along with the other things that, uh, the other studies that were referred to, so we have them in hand, uh, prior to our county board meeting.
Okay, uh, Member Rutledge seeking recognition followed by Member Pachowski, I believe.
Chairman, um, one of the very first constituent concerns I had when we were first seated was, uh, the issue about chickens. And I have been receiving actually more emails about chickens than I have about property taxes. And I do believe that in this kind of a situation where you have meatpacking plants that are closing down and price wars on eggs, I I think the time is right for us to open up this discussion, uh, whether we will allow chickens in unincorporated areas. Um, just for a little background on my opinion, I have a sister that has an urban farm in Rogers Park, right on Twoey Avenue. She not only has hens, but she does have roosters as well, and she has worked with her neighborhood, uh, to be able to, um, you know, mitigate any issues that they have, not that it's the quietest place to live to begin with, but, um, I I think that if somebody can have hens on Twoey Avenue in Rogers Park, I don't understand why we can't do that in unincorporated DuPage, especially in this, uh, of the right to be able to feed their families, and I think hens would allow this, so I would like to see if we could get this agi- uh, item on a, our next agenda.
Okay, uh, Member Desart, oh, I'm sorry, Member Pachowski followed by Member Desart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to give you some statistics, talent entry, and it went from a hundred people a week to three hundred and seventy-five a week, so I just want to thank the food pantry for all their fine work that they're doing to feed the hungry in, uh, DuPage County.
Member Desart. She's on mute, please unmute her.
Sorry about that, I just wanted to give a shout out and a sincere thanks to Dennis Brennan and everybody at the DuPage County Health Department. Dennis gives us an, an excellent update every single day, weekends, Easter Sunday, every single day, he gives us a, an excellent update, and it's really a hopeful update, it not only talks about the number of cases and the number of deaths, but also the number of people recovering and who have recovered, um, worldwide view, United States view, Illinois view, and of course, DuPage County view. And I want to thank the Health Department and especially Dennis Brennan, uh, because I use that information, I put it out on my, um, constituent Facebook, uh, page, and that way I can keep my constituents updated on what's going on in the county, the state, the country, and the world, so thank you to the Health Department.
Very good, very nice, uh, Mr. Elliott, is he getting recognition? No, who was next, Brian Kuduski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to give a shout out to our veterinarian, Barb Hanneck, I received a text message this morning from Janelle, the care center, and Janelle just, Janelle wanted to let me know, as chairman of Animal Services, how helpful Barb Hanneck has been to the care center and obtaining PPE for the staff over there and the residents to help keep them safe, um, so I want to thank Barb for her efforts in helping to get that PPE equipment for the care center.
Okay, thank you, Member Healy, followed by Member D'Ziani.
Once again, if we're doing the shout outs again to Nick and to Cheryl, to Joan, and yourself, and to Jim and, uh, uh, Member Larson for all the stuff they've been doing over the last week and, you know, even getting calls on, uh, Easter weekend and stuff like that, I know that you guys are working, and thank you all very much for everything you've been doing and planning for our future.
Very nice, thank you, Mr. D'Ziani.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I want to reiterate the fact that we do not, there was in public comments, somebody indicated that we had a case of COVID at the care center, I I I just confirmed again with Janelle Chadwick, our director at the care center, we do not in fact have a case there. Um, they they have been running everything within CDC compliant, working very, very close with our Health Department. Kudos to our Health Department for working with all the different agencies from hospitals to our care center, all of our nursing homes, et cetera. But, um, uh, no, no cases at the care center, we got to, I want to make sure it's crystal clear, I want that getting out there in public, uh, we do not have one case, and we're hoping to keep it that way a- at the care center. I also want to give a shout out to, uh, DuPage Pads and Catholic Charities who are tending to our homeless, uh, it it would, via, via local hotels, uh, working with, um, Beth Marquetti. Uh, we've got, you know, o- over, I think it's close to two hundred people, families, uh, in hotels, uh, we've got local, uh, food people like, uh, Francesca Michi, who are donating food to these folks on a, on a weekly and daily basis. Um, Market Table and Elmer's feeding all of our Elmer's Hospital employees twice a week with, I think, almost seventeen hundred lunches, um, it, it's really, uh, uh, a collaboration of government and private, uh, coming together here to, uh, to do the right thing, so, a lot of people to be thankful for, and, um, uh, I, I just want to make sure it's crystal clear at the care center, we're, we're COVID free and we're hoping to keep it that way, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, anyone else seeking recognition, Member Covert, followed by Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, while we're giving out shout outs, um, I want to say a big thank you to Jonathan Nelson and our staff. Uh, DuPage County is, has a higher, um, DuPage Census, uh, response rate was higher than the Illinois rate. And I also, we, he did a tremendous marvelous job, uh, shout out to all our committee members who worked so hard, um, in getting the messaging of the census out. And, um, Joan for the census video with me and Vice Chair Healy. Um, Naperville, the city of Naperville, where I'm from, my district, we were, um, number one in response rate for the census, so I'm really proud of that, thank you to Mark Rice, who's the chair of the Complete Count Committee in Naperville, and Mayor Cherico, so thank you so much.
Very nice, uh, Member Ozog. Member Ozog.
She's frozen.
She's, uh, frozen in time and space. Hello? We have a little technology here, Wendy.
Oh, there she is.
Oh, there she is. Please proceed, you're unmuted.
She's frozen.
Hmm. Looks rather like that.
It's got some.
Sure, very nice. Um, I don't know, what do you, what do we, we want to do? All right, we'll come back, Member Remahan seeking recognition?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I just want to continue and on the positive notes, um, I'd be remiss if I did not thank Mary Keating and her community services team, um, we just heard twenty-eight thousand people have filed for unemployment in our county, um, from our treasurer, and obviously, community services are going to be a pivotal part of recovery, so thank you, Mary, for what you've done and going forward.
Very nice, uh, Member Ozog, you're live.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, glad to hear that, um, I would like to thank the Glen Allen Park District, on April third, they held a food drive for the Glen Allen Food Pantry at Ackerman Park. Uh, it was orchestrated beautifully and they collected, I'm not even going to try to say how much, but a very large, truck full, very, very great contribution, and they had it just like clockwork, in and out, and a great community response, so thank you to Glen Allen Park District for being part of that, thank you.
Very nice, uh, Member Zay, is he seeking recognition, followed by Member Elliott?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to let the board know that, uh, the DuPage Water Commission will be passing its budget on Thursday, and the city of Chicago has raised the rate again, ten cents for a thousand gallons, because of the financial planning of the Water Commission and its staff and its, its board members, uh, the Water Commission is going to not pass that on to the residents and to the municipalities of DuPage County. Now, because of our planning, we have money in reserve, there'll be about over two million dollars that we will eat this year because of what's going on, and we have the financial wherewithal to do that. So, uh, we're hoping that, uh, this will help our municipalities and the residents over the next year.
Very nice, Jim, very nice, thank you for making that on the record, uh, Mr. Elliott, followed by Member Chaplin.
I just wanted to, uh, I, uh, remind everyone of the great work that, uh, Lisa Shvok and her team at Worknet DuPage, uh, are doing during this time, I've sent, I think, at least one or maybe two emails, uh, to all of you with the links to the Worknet page, uh, it's a tremendous resource, uh, you know, even in good times, uh, they provided a lot of really great job, uh, training and job placement skills, that's obviously incredibly important right now. And, uh, you know, even during this time of just incredible turmoil, there are employers looking for employees, there are growth industries, there are opportunities for people who've been laid off to, to get with jobs and the training skills, and so I would just encourage everyone here to, um, direct your constituents, uh, not only the, the people looking for work, but employers that are looking to satisfy workforce needs, uh, to the Work, uh, Worknet DuPage page, uh, the website, they're doing a tremendous job.
Very nice, thank you, Member Chaplin.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, so, um, I would like to thank, uh, the environmental staff, Joy Hines especially, for, um, really having great communications with me throughout the last month, uh, she's been sending me a lot of important information. Um, some of that information includes changes to our waste haulers, how they're collecting, um, garbage and recycling, and that's all out on our, um, social media. Um, and the, uh, there's some good news that the Burr Ridge Electronics Recycle Center will be reopening on April twentieth, and they're asking that people prepay by credit card, um, on their website for their flat screens and their TVs, so that's some really positive news, uh, some of our recycle centers are starting to open. Um, and I'd also like to thank some, uh, of the, um, outstanding organizations and, and groups in, uh, my district. I know you mentioned that Timothy Christian was making, um, I believe face shields, uh,
And Downers, yeah.
Yeah, Downers Grove South High School, um, teachers, um, Mr. Mullinari and Mr. Parker are making, uh, masks with their three D printers for our healthcare workers, um, face shields, actually, uh, the Downers Grove Quilters have made, uh, tons of face masks, as is, uh, Lorenzo Taylor's, which is in Lisle, they've also been making masks, um, we have, uh, fire towing in Downers Grove that's been going around wishing kids happy birthdays by driving their trucks through the streets if somebody calls, so wait for kids to get a little birthday celebration, um, our hospitals in District Two, Elmer's, Good Sam, um, Hinsdale, all the employees there thank them for everything that they're doing, uh, you know, it's, we're very privileged to be able to stay home and, um, you know, do our jobs at home, but there's so many people, hospital workers, grocery store employees, um, gas station attendants, restaurant, uh, workers, uh, construction workers, waste haulers, custodial workers, they all have to go into work every day. So the more that we stay home and stay in, the better it is we're protecting them, and I just want to thank them, and that goes for our employees at the county. I know many of them are, some of them are working from home and some of them are working, um, at the office, um, you know, just thank them so much because it is, it is scary times and, uh, you know, I just really appreciate that effort. Um, let me see if I have anything else on here that I wanted to mention, oh, yes, and I did also want to give a shout out, I had it on my notes to Dennis Brennan as well, he's been doing a great job at getting us those updates, and that's very much appreciated, and I know many of us are sharing that information and our constituents always are so thankful, and they thank us every time that we share it, so, um, thanks, everyone.
Hey, very nice, Liz, um, so, uh, anyone else seeking recognition on the order of old business? Old business, seeing none, uh, hearing none, uh, we move to the order of new business, new business, Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, as many of you may have seen in your emails last night, today starts Giving DuPage Day. In light of the current events, um, Shafali and the board have decided, instead of doing one giving day where we can have a lot of impact, we're going to be doing this a full month, starting today. I want to highlight some of the reasons why this full month of giving activity is not only something I hope you all share with your constituents and with your friends and your neighbors, but also that you'll consider giving to as well. First, it's not a shock, we all know that many nonprofit community members in our community are hurting right now, whether they're serving high populations that really need help during the specific time or other populations, we know that people are just, money is a little tight, and so our nonprofit community needs our support. Secondly, this, where is over sixty nonprofits that are signed up now, which means that we're supporting not just healthcare, um, organizations or community service organizations, but a lot of organizations that might be overlooked over the next few months while we're in this health crisis, so organizations within the arts, with animal services all over the county. So you can really have a lot of impact touching a lot of parts of life through giving, through this Giving Day. Um, I also want to point out that spring and summer is a really important time for most nonprofits, this is when they have their big galas or they have their big fundraising events. And as we know, many of them have not been able to, they're not going to be able to do that this year for safety, so this is a really great opportunity to support Giving Days and to make sure that these nonprofits still, um, can see the support that they deserve, so I just want to give you the website, it's W W W dot Giving DuPage Day dot org. Um, and you'll, I'm sure, see a follow-up email later today, for a member Hart also serves on the Giving DuPage Board with me, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, that's great, Member Selman, it's an outstanding, uh, organization, and it's like a homegrown effort from our staff and our team here at the county, so, yeah, and, uh, Shafali's got a little bit of energy, I don't know. She's great, uh, who else is seeking recognition, Member Noonan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, as the chairman of the E T S B Committee, I'd like to share these remarks. This year, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April twelfth through the eighteenth of twenty twenty, happens during an unprecedented time of global pandemic this week. I would like to recognize and thank the one hundred and eighty-six telecommunications working at the four P S apps in the county, Addison Consolidated Dispatch Center, DuCom, DuPage Sheriff's Office in Naperville. Thank you to all of these dispatchers for providing a very essential service to the community and for keeping us safe, thank you.
Very nice, Member Noonan, um, who else, Member Covert, there you are, you have a little company there.
We're actually wondering if Jenna could, uh, adjourn, make a motion to adjourn the meeting today.
Well, if, why don't we do that, you could join her in that motion, I think, what we're going to do, uh, yes, that would be fine by me, um, I think if we, uh, uh, probably need to have a member of the board join her in that motion for technical purposes, but we would welcome her and we'd love it. Yes, sir, Mr. Elliott.
Yeah, there, there's one other thing that I'd want to mention, uh, as well, which is also, um, you know, I, uh, we talked about Worknet DuPage. Uh, one of the other resources that I did want to remind the board members about is Choose DuPage, um, during this time, they've had, uh, six thousand vi- uh, businesses reach out to them, six thousand. So, uh, they are another great resource, and again, many of us are getting phone calls from employers, large and small, from employees, not only Working at DuPage for job training opportunities, but also we need to remember the good work that our friends at Choose DuPage are doing as well.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, uh, Member Elliott, um, I, I would say a big, big part of every day, I've been immersed in, uh, teleconferences, phone conferences with businesses, large and small, that are really struggling and trying to navigate their way through not only, you know, the guidelines for workplace, uh, but now there's, uh, there's all sorts of issues, how to help advise them, how to get through this, uh, payroll protection and other federal programs, CARES Act. Um, and I have been so impressed with the work of Greg Bedeloff and, uh, Choose DuPage, and we've gotten a lot of really positive feedback from businesses across the county, so, yeah, thank you, I'm glad that you brought that up, there was somebody else, Mr. Diciani.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah, that's a great point, a lot of our businesses are stressed right now, uh, they're applying for the various opportunities, from the Payroll Protection Act to the Disaster Act. Um, Choose DuPage has, uh, held several webinars, which I've been, uh, a part of, and, uh, they've done a great job. I know many of our businesses throughout, uh, the county are applying for these, uh, these grants, and it's, uh, it's paramount that we, uh, we help our, our businesses get back on their feet. One thing I was, what, what was asked, was wondering, you know, uh, is, when, when, when this economy does open again, and when we are allowed to go back to work, is there a way the county can help facilitate some of the antigen testing? Um, one of the, one of those tests I brought up several weeks ago is now allowable by the F D A and is over ninety percent accurate, but, you know, a lot of us maybe have had this already, but we don't know. Um, uh, and this antigen testing would actually, uh, allow people to understand if they've actually had this virus or not. Um, if they've had it already, uh, naturally they're, they're immune to this and, and likely can go back to work faster than, than maybe somebody that hasn't. Uh, but, you know, we, we've got the county health facilities throughout the county, um, and it would be a great way we could help our businesses and our, our residents. Uh, once this economy is open again and the president and the governor allow us to go back, I think the te- the testing would be, uh, really important if at all possible, so Chairman, whatever we can do within your leadership and with the county's support, um, I, I would, as H H S Chair, would be very supportive of this, because I think it would give people peace of mind that maybe they've had the virus already, um, you know, a greater majority are not symptomatic, but if, if, maybe have gone through this already, so it would be, uh, it'd be imperative to give people peace of mind if at all possible.
Um, Member Healy.
Yeah, on, on that thing, uh, Nick Kotmeyer is actually looking into that, we've been talking about it for a week or so, uh, and I think he's trying to get some information back at this time.
Anyone else seeking recognition on the order of new business? Seeing none, hearing none, uh, I, I know that we do not have executive session today, so Jenna and, uh, Member Covert, would you be kind enough, uh, to, uh, entertain us with a motion to adjourn?
All right, go ahead, say.
I move to adjourn this meeting.
Move to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, uh, to adjourn this meeting, uh, to Tuesday, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty at ten AM, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay, the ayes have it, Jenna, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.
All right, say thank you.
Thank you.
Enough O's and smooth to describe that technological experience, thank you, Wendy and Michelle and Joe and, uh, everyone that works so hard on this, uh, Don Carlson, thank you, have a great day, everyone.
Take care.
Bye-bye.